All right, good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the Finance Committee for October 7th to order, realizing we have a full quorum, and I'd like to rise for the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have six items on the agenda. Item number one is approval of the minutes of the September 9th meeting.
Motion approved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, that motion carries. Item number two is a resolution to accept donations to the Parks, Rec, and Forestry Department. Is this you, Jay, or?
I think it's pretty self-explanatory, but I can answer any questions if there are any.
Motion approved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further comments or questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, and that motion carries. I'd like to thank River Shores and Regal Wear and the West Bend Friends of Park and Recreation for their donations. Definitely appreciated. Item number three is a request to authorize the city engineer to sign a tri-party design contract, Eighteenth Avenue Reconstruction, Paradise Drive to Vote Drive. Presentation by city engineer Max Marshall. Good evening, Max.
Good evening, thank you very much. So I come to you tonight with a request to authorize me to sign a contract for the reconstruction of Eighteenth Avenue. The city of West Bend entered in a state municipal agreement with the Department of Transportation for this project, and we had a point where we were working with the consultant that was selected through our process. The selection committee had sent out to the DOT the list of their top five candidates, which were R.A. Smith, Kapor, Strand Associates, Grave, and Alfred Benesch and Company. And the DOT Central Office approved R.A. Smith as the designer, and we actually met with them, the DOT, and R.A. Smith on September 26th for the scoping meeting. So our next step is the negotiation meeting, and once we have that negotiation meeting, then we would have a contract, a tri-party contract with the DOT and R.A. Smith and the city of West Bend. And the reason why we're asking for the power to sign the contract without coming back to the Finance Committee and Council is because we're trying to fast-track the execution of the contract in order for the consultant to start working on site earlier. We're trying to beat the weather so that some tasks that need to be done before the cold weather sets in can be accomplished. Actually, we received this afternoon about four o'clock the estimate or the proposal from the consultant, and I can tell you that it is within the estimate that we have in the state municipal agreement. Obviously, we have to go through all the tasks and have the negotiation meeting with the DOT, but it looks like everything should fall in line for this contract. So if you have any questions?
All right, thanks, Max. Any comments or questions for Max at all?
Motion approved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Last call for comments. If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, that motion carries.
Thank you.
Just don't sign our life away. Item number four is a selection of benefit insurance consultant with a presentation by Michelle Hoi, Director of Human Resources. Good evening, Michelle.
Good evening. Just as it states in here, we did an RFP, a Request for Proposal, for an employee benefit consultation, and we had a team that was formed, and we had 11 that we went, sent it out to, nine responded, and then we had reviewed them and brought them in for the top, in for interviews, and we are making a recommendation for the Horton Group to begin as our insurance consultant January 1st.
Thanks, Michelle. Any comments or questions for Michelle on this one?
And I do have Rayanne Bodry here from Horton, and she can do a short presentation, like really short.
Really short.
Really short.
Good afternoon, thank you. My name is Rayanne Bodry, and I am the Executive Vice President of the Horton Group here in Waukesha, Wisconsin. We're so happy and grateful for this opportunity to serve with the city of West Bend. We wanted to make sure that the city was aware that we have a serious team backing, myself, we have other senior sales consultants, we have service technicians, underwriters, certified underwriters, as well as marketing specialists. So we stand ready and able to take on the city, and we're looking forward to doing this work. The reason that people choose Horton is we are, we have been working in the public sector and have a niche there since 1994, and the big ticket item here is our responsiveness. So I have worked with Michelle Hoi before in her tenure at Washington County, and I realize the expectations of municipal government. So that sometimes means night work, it sometimes means very early in the morning. So we are, we are looking forward to being great consultants for the city. Last but not least, we are very excited to start on some initiatives, even though we recognize that our contract isn't going to be starting until January 1st. This is a very busy time for the city of West Bend, as well as for the employee benefits marketplace. So some of the things that we want to help with while we're sort of transitioning through is we will be ready and able to oversee any contract development that your current consultant is bringing forward, and make sure that administration and HR has all of the knowledge and the questions that they need to be asking to be sure that those are in place. We've talked about a pharmacy benefit manager audit to begin early next year. We want to explore some Budnold pricing arrangements for the city and expanded network opportunities and clinic use, how to really market that and move forward. And then we'd like to think about potentially offering multiple plan designs so that we can keep our multi-generational workforce extremely happy. So we want to help you recruit and retain, and employee benefits is a part of that. So again, thank you for the recommendation, and we're pleased and honored to begin this work as soon as possible.
Thank you. Any comments or questions for? Yes, Craig?
Thanks. Good evening, Rayanne, how are you?
Good, how are you? Thank you.
Really more a comment than I'll just ask Rayanne to confirm my thoughts. I had a chance to meet with Alex as well last week, and I asked the question of Horton and your team in particular, the mix between public sector, private sector, that your organization represents. I personally feel that it's important to have a good mix. We'd like to be cutting-edge and aggressive in our health insurance offerings to our employees, not just in the public sector realm, but we'd like to get some good ideas if they're out there from the private sector as well, and I believe you've got experience in both areas.
We do. It's very interesting because it's no accident that the other sales consultant on this team is Alex Bodry, and we have the same last name because he is my son. He's, he's an attorney, and his book is predominantly public sector, and he probably works about 75% of the time in this space because of the legal compliance issues and some of the other overriding things that we need in the public sector. I have been working in the employee benefits space since 1987, so quite, for quite some time, and my book is a little bit more of a mix. It's about 50/50. So I have about 50% public sector, and the rest of my book is larger self-funded private sector companies that are predominantly in the state of Wisconsin. So we see a good mix, we're watching the trends. We've, we've come through, you know, there isn't that many differences these days between the public and the private sector, but some of the things that make public sector unique, we feel need to be communicated and, and need to be more showcased. For example, WRS, no one ever says when they retire that they wish they didn't have a pension. It's, so one of those uniquenesses of being public, public entity is how do we communicate those things that do make you unique and therefore a fantastic place to work? We need to take what, what we've learned from the private sector, but really start communicating the things that make you great. So about 50/50, the rest of the team works on a myriad of different, of different business, some in the 2 to 50 space on occasion, as well as large private sectors. So we're happy to bring you a plethora of experience.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments or questions for Amy? Rayanne, I'm sorry.
I would make a motion to select Horton as our benefits insurance consultant.
Motion approved.
I have a motion and a second.
I'll second.
Motion approved. Any other comments or questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, that motion carries. Thank you very much, appreciate it. Welcome to working with West Bend. Item number five is a presentation of the preliminary 2020 operating budget with a presentation by Jay Chambeau. Just as a reminder, this is a presentation to the Finance Committee, and it'll be open to the common council once it goes through its public speaking process. So go ahead, Jay.
You have the proposed budget in your packets before you emailed to you in advance. I did add three documents just this afternoon. I also have those in paper copy, and I had a chance to chat with all of you briefly before the meeting so that you have them either digitally or in paper. I'm not going to read through the memo with the bulleted items, but maybe highlight some of them that I, I think are the most important, and we can certainly answer any questions that you might have. Carrie Winklebauer, our finance administrator, is, is here as well as, as long, as well as several department heads that can help answer questions regarding the proposed budget. The net new construction you see before you of 1.81 in 2019, it's the second bullet that produces about $350,000 of additional spending that is available to the city of West Bend according to the levy limit formula. For the levy that's proposed in this budget, we would also be asking for a portion of the unused levy limits in a similar fashion that we did last year to make up the levy ask, if you will, the, the bottom line. The budget instructions timeline, the only real difference is that we don't have the CIP before you yet. We had that adopted in August the last few years. We're hopeful that this budget would have some availability to add some projects. That necess, that has not necessarily been the case regarding the 2020 proposed CIP, although we're still working through some, I won't say last minute, but some newfound possibilities regarding specifically the, the fire truck in, in Chief's area, regarding a potential 10-year lease and how that might equate out to a similar level of cost and free up some additional dollars for other departments in the CIP. So stay tuned on that. More information for sure by the November 11th date, and we'll share it with you as we, it becomes more clear sooner. The only position that is being eliminated is the full-time park maintenance position. That position was held vacant for several years, and we allowed it to be filled regarding the EAP work within parks. We had significant work in that area and thought it was important to fill the position with the understanding that when it became vacant again, we would not fill it. It, it did become vacant again this year, and are recommending elimination of that position in the 2020 budget. There are no additional full-time positions added to the budget. I'll share with you the 2.5% merit increase that we put in as a goal is included in this, in this budget for all non-represented employees. The police and fire unions have a different formula that's been worked out as per their union contracts for the 2020 budget. No fund balances applied to, to make this budget balance. We do have a, a small contingency included. I did hand out the sheet reflecting that $769,000 number. I'll, I'll share the reductions that were made from the department budgets, included a, a big, a big number in the health insurance area, that $454,000. Four hundred thousand of that is health insurance reduction. It's, I won't say a, a dance that we do, but on, on an annual basis, we have our insurance consultant, and in the future, Rayanne will probably be recommending that, that increased number to us at a high level, a safe level of self-funding. And then Carrie and I and all the department heads look at all the budget requests, and we see that monster number and say, there's no way we could fit that into our, our system, and our trend has been positive, so we reduced a significant amount of that 400, or of that $400,000 out of that budget, back down to more common trending numbers of the past few years. So just know that there's some risk in the health insurance area. That makes up a big chunk of the 769,000. This, this sheet is largely driven by expenditure restraint. The expenditure restraint worksheet to preserve $500,000 of future funding, we already have it established for 2020, but by the passage of this budget, we can preserve that $500,000 in 2021. This budget does do that, and it reflected some later hour, not last hour, but later hour cuts in, or department adjustments that we had lots of conversations with departments down the stretch of needing some additional money. So thank you to all the department heads that were receptive of that and helped me and Carrie find those areas to, to trim back in order to continue to maintain expenditure restraint. I mentioned contingency, that's, that's not a large number for a budget of this size. We feel, feel more confident coming in with a small contingency recommendation, knowing that we have a large fund balance at 28%, that if something catastrophic were, were to happen, we wouldn't just look at the annual contingency or the operating contingency, but rather the, come, come before you with a ask of the fund balance itself. The levy increase is reflected there at 1.68% or 362,000. The rate increase of 785 off of the 779 number shows a 0.77% increase. And then the rest of those items are reflections of larger ticket items within the, within the budget. I didn't list the actual number with SALT, but based on some changes in operations and how Doug has been applying SALT over the last year or so, we're able to insert some additional risk in this area to, to, to scale back the SALT, proposed SALT usage. I guess with that, I'll stop talking and answer any questions that you might have.
Thanks, Jay. Thanks, Jay. Can you speak a little bit about the TIF piece that we had with the state and what that resulted in?
Yep. So if you look at your public notice, draft public notice document, it's the document with the two columns, 2019, 2020, I think your ask, Alderman Caston, is along the lines of TID apportionment. If you look two-thirds of the way down or just before the 1.68 number in bold where the total levy is, it shows a 2019 TID apportionment of 1.9 million and a 2020 apportionment of 1.5 million. That's a significant reduction, 19% over, year over year, and that really came from the state. When we did a revaluation in 2018, the state set our valuation number for citywide at 90% around 90%, high 80s instead of the 100%. And we had Ian and Mark and Carrie and Jeff and everybody in a room when this first came out with a significant TID reduction, asking how that could happen, and during the revale process, they took Jeff's 100% number and set it at 90%. So it was a, was an error, and they admitted to it being an error on their part. However, it's one that we were overpaid. The end result is we were overpaid in TIF in 2019, so in current year budget, and now it's a, in effect, a two-year correction. So it's a, it's a significant reduction in what TID increment was available. So that, I mean, it's a long-winded answer to your question, Rich, but that's what reflects the, the significant variance there of 1.9 down to 1.5.
Okay. Thanks. Any other comments or questions? Yes, Mayor?
Jay, we're, on that same public notice document, I'll call it a projecting a 6% increase in the tax rate, so from 779 to, call it 785, which according to my rough math means about 160 grand in additional revenue. Now, my question is, I think in years past, last year specifically, we had about 600 grand worth of carry-forward money that we budgeted that wasn't, wasn't spent the way we thought it was going to need to be. Is there any reason to think that we won't have somewhere in that same range amount this year? Is it, I know it's some guesswork, but is it reasonable to think that we'll have at least 160 grand worth of carry-forward because we've had it in years past?
Yes, it's reasonable to assume we'll have carry-forward number, a number available in 2019. We have earmarked some of that carry-forward already, I think of the grant that the chief announced, and 10% of that, or 17,000, we're going to take from, or hope to take from the 2019 carry-forward. But yes, the end, I mean, the simple answer is yes, we will likely have carry-forward money again in 2019.
Because the way I'm looking at it is, we've taxed the people last year for what we, you know, what we budgeted, what we thought. We did a good job of operating the city. We have some extra dollars left over. Let's not increase the tax rate and extract another 160 grand out of folks if we have those dollars already taxed for. And I, that doesn't change your budget, it doesn't change, you know, where we're investing the dollars, it doesn't change the good work that you and staff have done. But I'd like to recommend that we use the time between now and November 11th, I think when we actually approve the budget, to rework the numbers with a, a flat tax rate, which will then drop the total levy by 150, 160 grands. Instead of a 1.68% bump, it'll be somewhere closer to 1%, maybe a hair under that. Did I explain that well enough, Chris? Does it make sense?
So then, in turn, because, because I don't know the answer to this, but does it look like, well, hey, we, based on what we've done in the previous years, these are the spots where we've been more conservative, and so we can plan on being so again? Or is there another bucket that these dollars go into that then transfers into the next year? And I, I don't know the answer to that. Is, how does that work? And if you don't know, maybe Carrie knows.
I'll take a stab at it. I'm not sure if, when you say another bucket, I, it's, it's not taking the carry-forward money or applying the carry-forward money isn't something that would be reoccurring or available to recur. So if we're, if we're, if we're using money to, to pre-fund an outlay, for example, that's currently proposed in the 2020 budget, it's, it's more like what the mayor just said, that, that budget would go down by that number if 150,000 is the, is the right, is the right number.
We've been putting, I would say, a significant portion or majority even of past carry-forwards into our fund balance, and at the bottom of one of Jay's pages here, that's why we're, you know, we're at almost, up over eight and a half, almost $9 million in fund balance when only seven or eight years ago, we were at like 2 million bucks. We've been taking these carry, carry-forward dollars and putting them into fund balance. But I'll use an item like police cars, for example. We buy our police cars for cash. So Jay presumably has dollars in the budget, let's say it's 160 grand worth of police cars, I don't know what the number specifically is, but with this fund balance, instead of taxing another 160, we would use carry-forward dollars to pay for police cars and, and then not have to tax for those this year.
Yes.
All right. And I would think that there's probably a better way for someone like Carrie to explain it to us, I think, given a couple of weeks. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I don't know, I'm not sure if I'm going to say this right either, but I just want to push back on that just a little bit, because I know that we're asking our department heads to scale back on a lot of things that, that they'd like to do. And if the money's going to be there, we're really not sure either way. I mean, I understand in past years, we've, we've been able to take that back, but I would, I would like to leave it how it is personally.
What, like, for example, what are we, I mean, this doesn't change the proposed budget that Jay came forward with and staff put together. It still buys and does exactly the same thing, we're just using leftover dollars to pay for some of it, instead of putting those dollars into our fund balance. So again, I'm not proposing anything get cut or eliminated or pulled out of the budget, it still will do the exact same thing, we're just using dollars that we taxed in 2019 to pay for some stuff in 2020.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
Do we get some type of consensus of if I'm all wet, or how we would like to direct Jay to proceed in the next couple of weeks?
Do I see basically a consensus of the group that asks Jay to go back and see if we can get that number back down to the 779, using either some sort of carryover or some other source?
When do we get a, a feeling for that carry-forward?
Well, I mean, we-
Because that might make you feel better, Justice, if you know we've got half a million bucks coming back that I'm sure we can use.
Yeah.
160 of it.
So we track on a quarterly basis how, how much we've spent of our 2019 budget. I, I would say we're on track for what we've, what we spent historically. Carrie and I specifically looked at fire when we were asking Chief Kudek to find some additional dollars to, to meet expenditure restraint, and we were tracking about where we were, like 66 or 67% within that same window of this time of the year last year. So, and, and I know that there are always unknown items that could come up. Both chiefs have some employees that are on leave, and Chief Moiler has some vacancies, and all that stuff factors into how much is going to be left. So I, I, I can't stand before you and say that we're going to know by November 11th what that number is, but I guess we'll know whether it's tracking in the disaster standpoint or in a place where we think we have 150,000 left.
Well, and it has come up at either this meeting or at councils in the past by at least a member that at some point, our fund balance, we're taxing people to put money in a savings account, and we, you know, encouraged that for a long time because it was painfully low. So I guess in my mind, I'm thinking a worst-case scenario, if we, if this year is different from the last five or six or seven years, and we don't have a carry-forward, that we've got other avenues to, to find 160,000 bucks instead of taking it from people when we, we simply don't need it. We've, we're coming up with some, some ideas on how to pay for that without a tax increase, without a tax rate increase.
Yeah, there'll still be a tax increase.
Correct.
I understand that.
That levy will still go up.
Yeah.
And, and we've had this debate. The owner of a $200,000 house in 2019 and owns the same house in 2020 for 200 grand will not pay more in taxes if the rate doesn't change. However, the overall cost of doing business, the city's business, is, will end up going up either 1.68% or hopefully more like 1%.
And it is important to know that it is, it is growing. It's not like we've held it flat across. There is, there's a bit of growth there, but has to be expected as we continue to go down this, down the path. Did you want to add something, Jay? I'm sorry, Chris?
That's all right. Jay, can you just touch on the, the library levy? And it's 0%. I know I alluded to the council last time that the past budget from the library board came in above about 20,000, so if you could give us a little bit more details on that, that'd be great.
Sure. I'll share my thought process in recommending a flat levy increase, and I, I know that Amy has some thoughts that she wants to share with you at the end of our budget discussion as well. The, the fact of the matter is that the library received an additional 42,000 in annual operating in 2019. That was, I'll say, unexpected. So they, they were able to recalculate in the past. If you remember the, the $107,000 number, that was a number that the county had been contributing to the CIP for the library for a lot of years. So that number is probably one that's recognizable to you. That number went down to 53,000 for the 2019 budget year. So 2019, the county contributed for the city of West Bend Library only 53,000 for future CIP spending. The result of the rest of that money, and some of it went away, some of it went to the neighboring counties, and that's part of this whole joint library discussion that the county's been having with our library system. But the increase, the annual operating, they took more money out of CIP and put it onto annual operating, and that gave the, the library $42,000. So with that increase in 2019, we had been, previous to that, recommending a half percent increase in the library levy, which equates to about $3,500. I chose to not grant the $3,500, but rather freeze it, knowing that they received 42,000 in, in 2019. If that answers your question, Chris, I think that's what you're... I, I will share that there are a few numbers, TID apportionment is one of them, that we don't have, so that's our, our best guess at this time. That number could move a little bit as the county and the other taxing entities get the- That number could move a little bit as the county and the other taxing entities get their, their information to us. So we, that's, we think we're, we're pretty accurate with that number, but it, it could move a few thousand dollars one way or the other. But, but most of the, because this meeting is a, is a whole week later than it was last year, we actually know a little more, like the transportation numbers came in and information that we didn't have at this time a year ago. But there's still a, a couple of numbers out there that are still in play.
Okay. So I guess overall, we'd be looking to see, is there consensus of the group to move forward with what the mayor's outlined? And, I'm seeing head shakes.
Yes, for me.
Okay. And if you could take that under, under direction there, Jay. I understand, Amy, you have some prepared remarks that you wanted to make?
Yep.
Okay.
The library serves like 750 citizens a day. So that's a lot of people coming into the library, and having a relatively flat budget over the last four years has put a strain on the resources the library can provide to the citizens. Costs have risen, but our levy has not very much. Books and materials have also risen to a 2% to an 8% increase even in the last year. Our contracts for services that we get at the library have also increased by 2% to 5%. And as you saw, the health insurance rates are also going up. The library's not able to keep up with the inflation and demand for, for library patrons. West Bend Library is requesting 600 to 1,000 more items than it is, than it is loaning out.
That's a good example right there, you know?
Yeah. 600 to 1,000 items are coming in for patrons more than we're lending out. So we're not able to provide all the resources we need for our patrons here in West Bend. When compared to other libraries in Wisconsin communities that are about our size, our materials budget is relatively low. Other libraries such as Manitowoc or NINA, they're budgeting over 200,000 for materials for their patrons, and their population is less than ours. The Wisconsin Public Library standard for materials should be at least 166,000 for what, the, the city the size of West Bend. So the library is requesting an additional 20,000 in its levy, actually 20,463 to be exact. An increase of 17,450 would go specifically to physical materials for our patrons, and then the remaining 2, 2,900 would go toward library contracts to make up the deficit there. So with that, I'll entertain any questions?
Any comments or questions, Amy? Yes, Chris?
Oh, sorry. I, I guess just so I understand and, and both sides can kind of get in this, so the, Jay, you had said it was 117 was the number, 117,000 going into CIP, right?
107.
Before?
107.
107. So what, how was that getting deposited, or so to speak, to the library, or was that going to a separate bucket? And I ask, because then I want to make sure that there was indeed an influx of the 42,000 that we talked about in 2019.
So in past years, through budget year 2018, that 107 was a direct payoff regarding debt service. So it, it was util, it, it came in and it was spent by the city based on the past construction project and the agreed upon arrangement with the library board to spend those, those monies.
Yep.
We don't have any such arrangement moving forward, so the 53,000 that came in in 2019 for CIP from the county can only be spent if it's, if it's offset by additional city spending, that's the way the library rules read, and there is no project at this time that's earmarked for that. So the 53,000 will reside in a separate account earmarked for library CIP.
So then timelines, why, timeline wise, Amy, so in last year, when you were, when you received notice of the influx of 42,000, talk about that process, how did that influence the budget? How did the budget look before that? And what, maybe what buckets did you drop or decide to delineate the 42,000 into?
The 42,000 was taken to hire, well, actually, fill a position that we had eliminated before for circulation. And some of those funds went into materials, just a little bit, about 8,000. And the rest of it went to increases in contracts, health insurance, all those types of things, they dropped into different buckets.
So I guess what I'm getting at, to play devil's advocate, if that 42,000 had not been given, how do you think that, how do you think the library budget would have operated last year? Would it have been, or, I'm sorry, this current year, would it have been just without that one field position, a little less materials, those items?
Probably, I don't know what the board would have decided as far as hours of operation or how we would spend that money, but I propose that we, that we add that additional person to help cover the hours that we have, we're open.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, Craig?
Thanks for coming forward, Amy. And between you and Jay, maybe you can answer this. My understanding is that there was a discussion before the 42,000 was spent regarding the budget, and the option was laid out there that said, you could, if you're looking for a 20,000 increase, you can cover two years basically worth of 20,000 increases, so invest those dollars into your budget ask. You guys chose not to do that, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, and you're here saying now you're 20,000 short, even though you weren't. Is that right? Am I missing something?
I think, I think the, I mean, the timing of that 42,000 influx, if you will, into the 2019 budget was near the end of our budget process. So we were, we were already down the, the road of a 2019 budget without the 42,000. And then that deal with the county became realigned and the money became available. I remember you, you used it for some technology too.
Yes. We did purchase new computers for the public that needed to be purchased, so we didn't ask for additional funds for that.
And that's really my concern in general, and Justice, goes back to our conversation just a couple of minutes ago, if we get a few little golden nuggets of dollars, they tend to disappear. So if, if we're looking for 20 grand, we had two years' worth of the 20 grand there with a budget that sounds like was nearly approved, some money fell out of the sky and it was spent someplace else, now we're asking the citizens for more money again when we had it. So that's generally my concern, and going back to the tax rate, the same thing. We taxed money last year, we've got some money left over, let's not re-task tax, let's use what we already, what we already generated before we ask for more.
Any other comments or questions? So I guess the direction.
Hi, I'm Deb Bartnikowski, and I am president of the library board. I do not remember that discussion of the 20, 20 or 40,000 being put in an account. I don't know if anyone else on the board remembers that, but I do not remember that. In addition, county money is not supposed to be considered payment for city-type funds. If you read State Statute 43, you have two separate buckets of money. So what we are saying, that circulation position has to do more with county than city. There's a very fine line between the amount of money that is brought in. You've got your county money and you've got your city money, and those are supposed to be utilized for those specific services. Right now, we at, at the library are spending approximately 49% of our budget is for city services, and about 37, 39 for county, and then there's an outreach. So the city right now is, and this is on the city website, if you go back and look at the finances, we are receiving under 50% funding of our, for our budget-
For the library.
For the library.
Okay, thank you. I guess from my perspective, given the cuts that we've had to do to hit the expenditure restraint, as well as the challenge we've got with the, with the TIF levy, I guess I wouldn't look to change that, that levy that we've got right there for the library, but I will look at what other... Any other comments on that or direction for Jay?
Actually, Jay, I have one question. So there is going to be another 53,000 this year from, that's a, an annual thing from the county, right?
It, it'll be in that 53,000 neighborhood. Amy might know the exact number, I don't know it, but it's for, it's reserved for-
It's just over 53. It's, it's for CIP only.
And is that a library-
Library CIP.
Agreement? Can the board change that and use that to offset, or that's just locked?
No. It's in the county agreement that was signed in 2014, that those funds can only be used for capital improvements, and they need to be matched by the city.
Gotcha.
I guess just jumping on that, off of that for the, for future conversations, I have asked Jay to, to look at that agreement a little bit more closely. You know, maybe we can start to, our ball rolling to, you know, rework this so that it's more beneficial to all members, and so, and so that we have a clear understanding as well, so.
All right. So we have a consensus on direction for Jay? All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item number six is to schedule the date and time for the public hearing regarding the 2020 operating budget. That time we'd like to propose would be Monday, November 11th at 6:30 PM here in the council With that, I'd entertain a motion or-
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by the same sign. That motion carries. Being no further business before the finance committee, I adjourn.
Thank you, Rich.
Thanks, Adam.
Thank you, Adam. Have a good night.
Like to call the City of West Bend Licensing Board for Monday, October 7th, 2019 to order and recognize that we do have a quorum here tonight of the licensing board. We have four items on tonight's agenda, starting off with item number one, approval of the minutes from the regular meeting from September 23rd, 2019.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any questions, comments, or corrections? Harry, none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And opposed, that motion carries. Item number two, under items for consideration, is approval of the operators licenses, and the list is in our packet.
Motion to approve.
Second.
The motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Item three is temporary Class B beer/wine license for St. Francis Cabrini Parish for the St. Francis Cabrini Haiti Dinner being held on November 9th, 2019 from 4:00 PM through 10:00 PM in the Mother Cabrini Hall at 1025 South 7th Avenue.
Motion to approve.
Second.
The motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. And item number four is a temporary Class B beer and wine license for the HBBA for the Harvest Moon being held October 26th, 2019 from 4:00 PM through 10:00 PM at Lock Lorrain at 300 Schmidt Road.
Motion to approve.
Second.
The motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Be no further business before the licensing board. I adjourn. And I'd like to call the City of West Bend Common Council for Monday, October 7th, 2019 to order and recognize that all eight aldermen are here and accounted for tonight. Item number one, under proclamations, is a proclamation regarding Fire Prevention Week, and it reads, "Whereas, in 1922, President Calvin Coolidge proclaimed the week of October 9th as Fire Prevention Week in commemoration of the Great Chicago Anne Peshtigo Fire, which began on October 8th, 1871. And whereas, the City of West Bend first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. The 2019 Fire Prevention Week theme, 'Not Every Hero Wears a Cape, Plan and Practice Your Escape,' effectively serves to remind us that we need to take personal steps to increase our safety from fire. And whereas, on Saturday, October 12th, from 10:00 AM through 1:00 PM, the City of West Bend Fire Department is holding an open house at Station Number One located at 325 North 8th Avenue to further educate our citizens. Therefore, now therefore I, Craig K. Sedanico, Mayor in the City of West Bend, do hereby proclaim October 6th through the 12th, 2019 as Fire Prevention Week throughout this community. I urge all people in the City of West Bend to practice fire safety and to participate in the public safety activities of the City of West Bend Fire and Emergency Services during Fire Prevention Week 2019." Thanks, Chief. Have a, have a good, safe, educated, educational week. And number two is approval of the minutes from the common council meeting on September 23rd, 2019.
Motion to approve.
Second. The motion and a second. Any questions, comments, or corrections? Harry, none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Items three through eight are under the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Item number nine, under items for, agenda items for consideration, is the cooperative agreement between the USDA Wildlife Service for the removal of deer from the city and conduct a deer survey. Jay, are you running through that? John, is this your baby?
Um, yeah.
Take it away.
First of all, I just want to move, Joanne Klein from Lock Lorrain, I called her about how the vegetation has been going on out, out at Lock Lorrain, and has she noticed any difference from our, our deer abatement program from last year? And she did send me a note saying that she did walk Lock Lorrain just about a month ago and said that she didn't notice there is a slight difference of the vegetation starting to come through from last year. And she says she only observed five deer in that park, which is a low number compared to what she's used to seeing out there. Also, I've also heard rumors from Lock Lorrain, people that they, they hope that we are not going to just do this one and done deal. They really want us to stay on top of this. They, they say we, we see a, a great number of last deer out there, and they see a, a great report that said that it's much better than what it used to be out there. This contract that's coming through now, I know that it's a little different from last year. There were a couple of things that were added to this. One was that they're going to do an aerial survey of the four, or three parks, but four properties, to get a good handle on the number of deer located in those, so they can set up their bait, baitment stations. And, and then they also are willing to give us a hand with the grant, as last year, we did have a little problem with the grant, it didn't quite come through, and Chip volunteered to help us fill out the grant, so we will be able to more than likely have a lot better success with it this time. That's about it. If there's any questions, I'll try and answer them.
Thanks, Shannon. Any questions for John?
I would incidentally just echo the sentiment of the number of deer we're seeing at around where I live. There are four hanging around, and without exaggerating, a year ago, there was at least 20 that were consistently poking around. I don't know if that's a direct result, or if the amount of ivory soap that I have shaved off and spread all over the yard to try and keep them away has, has taken effect, but fewer around. I haven't really noticed vegetation changes yet, but I, I think if we stick to this for a couple of years yet, it'll start making a pretty positive difference.
And Chip did mention that, that after this second abatement program, they suggest that next year, if we wanted to, we could look at possibly like at Lock Lorrain and Ridge Run for a bull- hunting areas, just to kind of make sure that this doesn't come back in five, six years and we have the same problem again. And that way we could open it up to like we did before.
Great. Thanks for the work you're doing. If there's any questions, we take a motion on the item.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Item number 10 is operators license for Mariah M. Dunkle, and this is a carryover from last meeting. Do we have an update? I think we were taking a look at a past license, I don't know, Stephanie or Chief, if you've got, Stephanie?
Thank you. I did do the research and the last license that Mariah Dunkle did have with the city expired in 2012. And that was before the incidents that had happened according to the City of West Bend Police Department, which happened in 2016.
Is Ms. Dunkle here tonight? If you have anything else to say, feel free to step up and let us know what's on your mind. If you have anything else you'd like to convey?
I don't know, I need the liquor license to obtain my job at the gas station here.
Okay. Any questions from the council? Otherwise I'd entertain a motion on the item.
I'll make a motion to deny.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? All those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Operator's license is denied. Moving ahead to reports. Item number 11 is a report by Alderman Hugaster regarding the Park and Recreation Commission Meeting. Steve?
Met on September 26th. A couple of things that, I don't know if surprised all of us or not, but our recreation supervisor, Nick J. Helmut, his last name, I lost it.
Lemke.
Lemke has resigned to take another position in his hometown area. And right now, we're going to fill the position as soon as possible, but several people within the Park and Recs Department are handling his responsibilities until that time comes up.
So plot twist, Alderman Hugaster.
There's a twist?
Others in attendance, if you haven't heard, so Nick left on good terms with the city and when he left, I encouraged him that if things didn't work out, that he should give me a call before we filled his position. That happened late last week. He called and asked if he could have his job back and we were in the process of posting, so my apologies for not sharing that with you in advance. We were able to bring him back, worked with Michelle in HR and found his benefits to be still not stale or whatever the right term is and they were able to reconnect him. He started today. Nick Lemke is our recreation supervisor, so we found one really, really quick is the...
Hey, there's a loss, it's our gain. You already heard about all the donations that were right into the record and we appreciate those from the people. The chairman, Jim White, who has been chairman of the Park and Recs Committee for as long as we've had parks, has resigned, effective basically immediately as the chairman. I think he's still going to stick around until his term is up as a member, but Mike Starle has since been appointed as the new chairman. Lock Lorrain, the goats were back in Lock Lorrain for three or four days last week eating all the plants that we don't want to roam. They're going to be having a luminary walk on October 12th. Stumping is still going on, they have done 420 of the 422 they wanted to get done, so that's almost done for the year. We received a $25,000 grant for the Eisenbaum Trail Maintenance. We've also received a grant of 121,000, almost 122,000 for the parking lot acquisition for the west side of the river project that we're doing. The estimated cost that we've seen for that is in the neighborhood of, you know, $5 million, so there's a lot of work to be done on raising money for that. The All Abilities Playground that Sarah and Shannon are still very passionate about getting done somewhere in the city. Park and Recs Department did a couple of tours of the one in Waukesha, the one in Port Washington, and the one in Franklin. And I mean, there's some really neat stuff they're looking at, but again, the big thing is going to be, you're looking at somewhere between 200 and $600,000 to pull this off. So they're still, they know the numbers, they're still raring to go. They had a, can't remember what, some kind of fundraiser and they raised a little over $400, so they've started and they're going to keep going at it. And the last thing, begin for the river walk, I mean, the river project on the west side that West Bend EDC made a $100,000 pledge for that and the Parks Department, they're just going to start a bunch of grant writing to try and help offset the cost. And the last thing is, I drove by the park today and I see they have started to set up Enchantment for this year, so that'll be coming down the road.
Good stuff, thanks, Steve. Any questions for Alderman Hugaster? Rich, Chris, Plan Commission meeting?
I don't think Chris was there, so I will take it.
Go with Rich.
Look at a couple of exciting things. We had a number of site plans, three of them that some of the businesses around the city are looking at doing some improvements to their buildings, Jared Harding DDS and BMO Harris Bank on Main Street, as well as Badger Packaging, so those all went through. And then also very exciting for the city was the site plan for the hotel and office building on the southwest corner of Water Street and Forest Avenue, the old Gale plant or I guess the headquarters. So took a look at that, looks very exciting, I can't wait for it to go up, so.
Thanks, Rich. Questions for Rich? Lastly, item 13, a report regarding the Tourism Commission Meeting. Tourism guys?
I'll take it.
Andrew?
So we met on September 30th. We had a few presentations from some grants we gave out on different events that would attract people to West Bend. Those three were MOA, excuse me, for the Art and Chalk Fest, Habitat for Humanity for German Fest, and Fiesta Latina for Casa Guadalupe Education Center. And we also approved funds that we discussed in our council meeting last time for the theater project that we approved. And that's all we really had.
Thank you. Any questions for Andrew?
Yeah, Andrew, do those funds go to the city to run that project or is the historic West Bend Theater going to do that project?
That's a good question, actually. Jay, you might want to get one?
I think the anticipation is they're going directly to the theater and they're going to run their own project. Max, unless you shake your head in a different direction, okay, he's concurring, that's how we left it at the last council meeting.
Good. Anybody else? And be no further business before the common council, I adjourn. Have a great evening, West Bend. Any announcements?
November 4th, the council meeting will be...
November 4th council meeting is at one of these schools, which I, I think, is it to be determined yet?
Silver lining something or other.
Silver lining stage.
So that's in the auditorium. The part of the building formerly known as the auditorium.
At the high school.
East side.
At the high school, yeah.
Not the gym, the other side. Anybody else?
They're pretty moved up, soft seats.
Bingo. Have a great night.